The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Meeting is now in session. Today is Monday, January 13th. The time is 6:00 P.M. Please rise.
Heavenly Father Jesus, we come to you tonight with praise and thanksgiving on our heart. We thank you for the abundance that you have supplied us. And we ask Heavenly Father Jesus that you bless each one in this city. Put a band of angels around us. We ask Heavenly Father Jesus that you will be with our leaders tonight. Those Heavenly Father Jesus that have taken on the job, thankful job, thankfulness job of leading this city. We just ask that you give them wisdom in the decisions that they have to make. We ask that you bless them, be with them, be with our city manager and city staff. And Heavenly Father Jesus, we'll give you the praise and thanks for it all. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please be seated.
Council Authority Member Leanne Jones Cruz. Here. Council Authority Member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Council Authority Member Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Janine Tucker.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
That sounded good. Conflict of interest, any council authority member and staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered or declare their conflict now. Seeing none, we're going to proceed. And the first item is a presentation to Mrs. Anita Gonzalez. I'll come to you, okay? All right, this is for you. The City of Riverbank Proclamation, whereas Mrs. Anita Gonzalez was born on January 2nd, 1919, in Cotton City, Maricopa, Arizona, and is celebrating her 95th birthday this year. And whereas Mrs. Gonzalez was one of eight children growing up, she attended schools in Merced, California area until the sixth grade and developed a love for history. And whereas Mrs. Gonzalez married her loving husband Paul Gonzalez in 1935, and they spent almost 36 wonderful years together, they were blessed with eight children and is fortunate to have over 42 grandchildren, 25 great-grandchildren, and 10 great-great-grandchildren. That's a lot. I should talk to my father about this. Whereas Mrs. Gonzalez devoted her life in caring and providing for her family, she worked very hard and long hours, allowing her to pass on to her children their value of good work ethic. She also ingrained in them respect, pride, and honor for our country, thus making 4th of July the favorite holiday in the Gonzalez family. And whereas Mrs. Gonzalez, who has lived in Riverbank since 1955, has been a blessing to all she has come in contact with over the past 95 years and is joined by friends and family to celebrate this exciting milestone in her life. Now therefore, be it resolved that Mayor O'Brien and the Riverbank City Council do hereby wish Mrs. Anita Gonzalez a very happy 95th birthday. And may she continue to share her love and joy with others. Furthermore, we do hereby encourage all fellow residents, families, and friends to pay tribute to Mrs. Gonzalez on her 95th birthday and wish her health and happiness in all the days to come. Sign this date by me.
Thank you.
You're gonna have to do the movement. I don't want her to move. But you want to say anything? Do you want to speak to the microphone?
Ma'am.
Would you like to say something, Mama? Other than "thank you"? Would you like to say anything to the council or Mr. O'Brien?
Oh, yes. Nice.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Yes.
So, thank you very much. Oh, no, that's good.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Thank you. And you all can either sing "Happy Birthday" or wish her a happy birthday.
And I told her I'd sneak her off as soon as this gets over, guys.
No, and I fully understand that. It was my bad time, too. We'll take just a minute. Bye-bye, thank you.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Don't work too hard, okay?
That could be a shirt. Thank you for your indulgence. Item two, public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and the city of residence. Please address the entire City Council LRA. Are there any public comments?
How do you follow that? She's so cute. Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Vicky Holt Angulo, and I'm the Riverbank Library Branch Manager. I'd like to tell you about our upcoming programs at the library. This week, children are invited to paint at the library. We're gonna do it on Wednesday, January 15th at 3:30. We're going to be painting winter birds in a snowy scene. And this is our inspiration. It's a book called Snowballs by Lois Allert. And we're gonna be making winter birds and birches, birch trees and snowflakes. So, if you have any children that want to come and paint, they're all welcome. Storytime continues until the end of January on Mondays at 10:30 a.m. Storytime will not be held on January 20th because it's Martin Luther King Jr. holiday. Storytime schedule is changing a bit this year, so there's less time off between sessions. So you can look at the calendar online at stenoslosslibrary.org or come by the library and get a paper calendar. Our Friends of the Library meeting is tomorrow, January 14th at 4:00 P.M. People are welcome to join the Friends for this meeting and see how they can support the library. And then, if you have an e-reader and you would like to know how to use free library ebooks, there's an informational meeting on Wednesday, February 5th at 6:00 P.M. That's a Wednesday. Bring your e-readers and come and join us for a hands-on time of learning. All these programs are free at the library, and it's because of the 8th of a cent sales tax that these services are available. Please stop by. You're always welcome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent calendar consisting of Item 3A, wave reading. Item 3B, approval of December 9th, 2013, City Council Local Redevelopment Authority Minutes. Item 3C, resolution designating the city manager and director of finance as representative for the 13 CDBG 8959 Community Development Block Grant Signature Card. Item 3D, LRA out-of-state travel request to attend an ADC 2014 installation invocation forum in San Antonio, Texas, February 8th, 2014. Is there anyone who'd like to pull any of the consent items? Anyone from the public wish to pull any of the consent items? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council for recommendation.
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar.
I second.
We have a motion to approve the consent calendar by Vice Mayor Tucker and a second by Barbara Martinez, council member.
Council Authority Member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Council Authority Member Campbell.
Yes.
Council Authority Member Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 61, resolution authorizing the approval of financing for sewer system improvements.
Yes, Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening is approximately the fourth time that we've brought an issue related to our sewer system improvement plan to you. This is a continuation of a discussion that we had in December in regards to the best way to finance the proposed sewer system improvements. And at this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Maricela Garcia to come and provide the presentation to you regarding the financing agreements.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Tonight, we do have for you a draft of the loan agreements that will be required to be submitted in order to complete the financing for the sewer system improvements, as well as the refunding of the 2005 wastewater revenue bonds. Also here is Craig Hill from NHA Advisors, who has been our financial advisor for this particular item. So just a brief presentation outline. I will go over a little bit of the history on the Energy Efficiency Upgrade Project, the financing proposal for that particular project, the 2005 wastewater treatment plant improvement bonds, and the refunding proposal for that particular bond issuance, the overall impact, and our recommendation. And just to mention that we also have Cameron Wiest, who has been our legal counsel throughout this item, as well as for any questions you may have. The Energy Efficiency Upgrade Project, the contract was approved in October 2013 with Schneider Electric. And the project is to upgrade our current treatment plant to a fine bubbled diffusion. What that will consist of is removal of aerators in ponds T1 and T2, and then an installation of three new blowers and one redundant blower. What this will lead to is a 75% reduction in energy use, an 87% reduction in total horsepower, and an estimated annual savings of $240,000. Schneider, through their contract, has guaranteed a savings of $204,000, which the city will be using to repay the loan that we will be obtaining. And so the financing proposal for the upgrade portion of the project, we will be looking to obtain a loan from Municipal Finance Group. The terms of the loan, the total financing in terms of the principal amount will be of a little bit over $4 million. The term will be 15 years, so that will mature in 2029. The interest rate that we will be obtaining on that is a 3.68% with annual debt service of $335,000, including the interest payment. The rate coverage that they require that we hold is at least 110% of the revenues. And we do have the option to prepay that at any time with a premium, so we would have to pay that at 101% value. And so the repayment source for this particular loan will be our sewer fund net revenues. In 2005, we issued wastewater treatment plant improvement bonds in order to address a notice of violation that the city had received in 2004. We issued approximately 4.475 in bonds, which addressed all of the items on the notice of violation, as well as helped us refinance some certificates of participation that had been outstanding. The current principal and interest that's due on that item is of $2.4 million. And the repayment sources also are sewer fund net revenues. What we're hoping to achieve through a refinance is to refund for a lower interest without extending the life of the bonds. And so the proposal that we received from Municipal Finance Group was to finance the bonds and the refunding using current reserves that we have on hand as well. So the actual principal we'll be issuing for that is a little bit over 1.7 million. The term will actually be just five years instead of the six that we currently have on the existing bond. So it will take us through 2019. The interest rate that we currently have on the bonds ranges between 4% and 4.25. The new proposal will actually bring that down to 2.38. So currently, our annual debt services, debt service ranges between $341,000 and $344,000. With this new proposal, our debt service would be $307,000. So we would achieve a savings of a little bit over $30,000. Currently, there's a rate coverage requirement of 1.25%, I mean, excuse me, yeah, 125%. The new rate coverage would drop down to 110%. And there's also a reserve requirement that our current bonds have, and so we're required to hold a year's worth of reserve with a trustee. That reserve requirement goes away with this new financing. So an overall impact for the refunding of our 2005 bonds, our debt service would decrease to $307,000, resulting in annual interest savings of $30,000. And that's due to the decreased interest rate that we would be achieving. The 2014 wastewater treatment plant loan that will help to finance the Schneider project will have annual debt service of $336,000. We have the guaranteed savings from Schneider of 204, which will go to offset that, as well as some additional anticipated savings within the utilities that will go to offset the annual debt service. Because this is going to be installation of new equipment, we also are anticipating that our operations and maintenance costs will be decreasing. And so tonight, we are recommending that the City Council approve the resolution which would authorize the approval of the financing for the sewer system improvements.
Thank you very much. I have a couple of questions. I'm sure other people have questions. On the new equipment, you're getting three compressors or four compressors, one for standby? Is that a standby necessity? With your savings of $34,000, that goes against that $100,000 in excess debt. So that's actually around a $66,000 that is gonna be a difference?
We would net that, yes.
Okay. What was the reserve requirement for the bond? And where is that money gonna go?
That money that's currently held by the trustee will be used to complete the refunding of the current bonds.
Okay. And blanket, immediate, all at once?
Yes. Actually, we'll be refunding them in September, which is when we're allowed to do the, allowed to call bonds. So we'll hold the funds that will be loaned to us until September, at which time we will use the entire amount to refund them.
That's how we drop it down, one year?
Correct.
So we're at risk for five years?
Not with what we're anticipating savings, but yes.
About four years. Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Question was answered with the reserve. Thank you.
This is a public meeting. Anyone from the public wish to comment or question? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council for action.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept Item 6.1 as resolution authorizing the approval of financing for sewer system improvements.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve Item 6.1 in a second.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.2, update the city's Healthy Eating Active Living Heal Efforts.
Mayor, members of the City Council, in 2010, the City of Riverbank joined the League of California Cities Campaign to become a HEAL City, which stands for Healthy Eating and Active Living. And a number of members of the council have been promoting healthy activities. And Councilmember Barbara Martinez in particular has been actively involved and asked me to provide an update to the City Council to just remind all of us of the importance of healthy eating and active living. And certainly a reminder to me, for those of us who haven't started our New Year's resolutions, maybe a little reminder there, but just how important that is to the overall health of our families and overall health of the community. And so this evening, I just wanted to provide the council and the community just a reminder that we are participating. And some of the things that we have done is that, as a city, and this was back in 2011, is to require some healthy choices in our vending machines and making sure that there were healthy alternatives. In addition to that, the city staff has had a couple of weight loss challenges. And that has been really a fun activity, and a number of people actually lost weight. A few of us gained weight, but a lot of people lost weight as well. So it's been a lot of fun. In addition to that, we were acknowledged by the American Lung Association last year for our anti-smoking policies. So there's a lot of things that we're doing as a matter of course that fall under the heading of Healthy Eating and Active Living. And I think most importantly is the parks and recreation programs that the city offers our community, so they can actively participate in creating a healthy lifestyle for their own families. That the policies mean very little. It's really the activities. And I think that we have an outstanding array of parks that are available to our community, and we have a very good source of recreation programs, which are highlighted in the activity brochure. Now, this one ends in February. There'll be a new one out in March, but there are copies in the back. And just for some options that people have to either use the parks for free or take part in low-cost programs that are available. And so in order to do that, I wanted to provide a little overview of some of the activities provided by the City of Riverbank Parks and Recreation Program. And then another component that I'd like to point out is the nonprofit component. The city has partnered with Community Gardens and the Get Fit Program. But those nonprofit groups that are taking this on, those are the ones that we want to encourage to do that. They are really the source of the power and the energy and the volunteer work to go out and make a difference. And I just want to acknowledge that the work that they have done as well. So, but just as an overview, kind of a little chance, too, to remind ourselves of all the things that we are doing as a park and recreation program. So one is that we have 16 parks throughout the city, and so clearly that is a great opportunity for everybody to get involved. And then, of course, the variety of programs, including the skate park, which almost always has somebody out there, is amazing to me. The Riverbank Community Pool. Each and every year, we almost always sell out for swim lessons early. Very, very high demand for the pool. We have tennis and pickleball courts, and pickleball is becoming a real draw. And Councilmember Campbell actually informed me last week that we actually have the only, we have the best pickleball courts in Stenosloss County. Public, public pickleball courts. Yeah. Yeah. So that's pretty exciting. We have the fabulous Jacob Myers Park and the trails that are available there. And it's estimated that more than 100 people walk there every day. And then, of course, we offer the day camps and the scouting that takes place there. It's a great resource. The sports complex and the ball fields, organized sports, as well as the pickup games that take place at our parks and sports facilities. The contract programs, the kids dancing, you can hardly, you can just hardly resist that. And then, of course, you have the various sporting programs, such as the basketball league that is highlighted on the screen. We have fencing, and we also have senior dances. And I think our senior programs provide a really important source of physical activity, but also mental stimulation and relationship, which, of course, is critical to healthy living as well. Our outdoor adventures, and just recently, the kids got to go to the snow. That just happened last December. Very exciting, a lot of fun. And also providing kids that may not get out and do some of these activities with a chance to get exposed to some fun activities and how to be more physically active as well. And then again, the new activity guide will be available in March, so people can watch for that and start planning for the summer of 2014. And again, my great appreciation to the community groups that are doing work in a variety of venues to promote healthy eating and active living in the City of Riverbank. And that concludes my report on this.
Are there any comments?
I just want to point out on the activity guide that it does say parks make life better. And as you can see, that we are a city of many, many parks. And often, you go to the parks, and it's filled with people having a lot of fun. So I just encourage everybody to get out and be a part of some of our community events that we have and our leagues, and especially the recreational community events. They're a lot of fun. Just encourage everybody to do it.
Sure.
There's been a lot of articles recently about the tie-in between staying healthy with your brain by doing a lot more physical activities. This doesn't just mean for older people. These habits are formed by the young when they're young. So the habits they form now as young people in the parks and with the recreation they do can carry over. And eventually, when they get up there into age like some of us on this council, they'll be in better shape and smarter and be able to run the city better.
Before I give it to the public, I have just one, Sue, I would like to commend you and your staff, especially what tots, you had what, 30? Okay, you maxed out on your swim, your swimming team. You couldn't accept anymore. Your fields are being used, what, 80? Was that teams or members from the community involved in the soccer? And then, all the other programs that you run, and your staff of thousands? Staff of three? Okay. And I commend you for the efforts. And a community is measured by the quality of their parks. The quality of their parks equate to the quality of their living. So I want to thank you for keeping our living qualities up. Okay, this is a public meeting?
I have one more comment, please. Just to talk about another project that's coming up for our HEAL program. Central Valley Community Resources is part of the Let's Move campaign for Healthy America, and we have more information that will coming out really soon. But I also want to talk about our first annual But I also want to talk about our first annual Walk to School Day last October, which was also one of these types of healthy activities. We had several children who had never walked to school before. We had several parents who encouraged their students to come out and walk, ride bikes, scooters, whatever it was on that one particular day. And now we're getting to see more children that are enjoying walking to school, although sometimes the mornings have been a little cool for us, but everybody's enjoying walking more and riding their bikes to school too. Thank you.
No comments from the public? I bring it back to the council and thank you very much for your update. Item 6.3, strategic plan update.
Yes, Mayor members of the city council wanted to take this opportunity to start off the year with an overview of our strategic plan and the, and the progress that we are making towards achieving our, our goals. To start with a little overview. Just to remind everybody that our mission statement is that the city of Riverbank is committed to providing exceptional municipal services in a fiscally sound and professionally responsible manner for our community. Our general three-year goals are to enhance public safety, to improve and maintain infrastructure and facilities, enhance professionalism and customer service, achieve and maintain financial stability and sustainability, and retain and attract businesses. And while these are not technically in any priority order, you can see how well they are connected. Our core values are professionalism, transparency, teamwork, respectful behavior, fiscal responsibility, integrity, and ethical behavior. The first goal for enhancing public safety, one of the top objectives was to deal with some of the traffic issues that we're facing in our neighborhoods with speeding. And so we have procured a speed trailer, we've begun using that, and we set up a, a plan to deploy that throughout the city, and that has been completed and is in use. We are also in the process of scheduling meetings with the Riverbank Care Homes to communicate the community's concerns and work with them to identify potential solutions and come back to the city council with a report. We were hoping to have that done a little bit earlier, but scheduling has proven to be a bit of a challenge, so we're, we're still in the process of getting those on the books. And the police chief and I are planning to, to do those meetings in late February. That being said, the chief has been working on this issue, working with the care group managers and, and dealing with some of the, the immediate needs that come up when we have a member of the care home community that is, is not being properly supervised. So I'd like to give him credit for, for really taking this issue on. So again, working with, to improve the safety and quality of life issues, that is, that is in progress and will probably be ongoing. The fourth item was to develop an interim update of our Riverbank Emergency Response Plan. And we've made a generally updated plan available on the internet. It's a very large document, so to make a paper copy didn't make sense, so we do have it on our internet. And we're working with the county to update the entire plan. We have really good countywide emergency resources here, and they are taking the lead on a countywide update, and so we will be working with them. And in fact, there is a meeting for the Disaster Council later this month, so we'll be participating in that as well, with myself, Norma Torres Manriquez, and council members, I think Darlene Barbara Martinez and Vice Mayor Tucker. So I think we've all RSVP'd for that. We also are working with graffiti abatement measures. And while we don't have specific abatement measures to present to you at this point, we have been actively working on getting a better response from BNSF. And that has yielded some results. So while there's not like a tech, a formal measure, I want you to know that our outreach efforts and our approach of being the squeaky wheel has been helpful to get a better response from the railroad. We also had, had hoped to do a, like a tabletop exercise for emergency preparedness before the end of this next strategic planning session, which ends in March. At, at this point, I think that we are going to need to postpone that for the next planning period of time and, and see if we can partner on with another existing group to do that. We just have not had the staff resources available to, to make that happen at, at this point. I think in some ways, now that the, the police chief has been formally appointed, that, that will help that system as well. In terms of the next goal, which is to improve and maintain infrastructure and facilities, one of the items that is not on the strategic plan is the project that was just approved, which was just approved by the city council. And that is going to be a significant upgrade to our infrastructure and prepare us for the long term and position us well for additional regulations that will, will be coming down from the state. So that was an important thing. But one of the specific goals was to present to the city council the results of an RFQ for an architect to prepare conceptual design for improvements to our community facilities, including the community center, the pool locker rooms, and the city hall facade, which you can see now really is in desperate need of repair. Once they had to take the trees down, you could see how, how needed a paint job was. So at this time, Sue Fitzpatrick is working on the RFQ, and that's in progress. And as you can tell, it's, it's actively being taken care of, and that is with a, a walkthrough scheduled for January 27th. So while we won't be able to, we didn't get it, we didn't get it done this week, it is on, it is on the path. We also have an ADA transition plan. This is really a work that needs to be done for a consultant, and in light of the changes, really the staff resources and development services and the, the costs associated with that, we're going to review that again at mid-year. And then an important thing that we'll be seeing more in, in the review of the mid-year budget is to look at the inclusion of the sewer and water rate studies. And that goes to the need to have our enterprise funds support themselves without being a risk to the general fund. So that'll be a very important discussion that we have beginning at mid-year and going through into the preparation of the 2014, 2015 budget. The complete street policy, we are in progress and working on that, they're working behind the scenes in Development Services. And so we are looking to get that to council at the second meeting in, in February, most likely probably the first meeting in March. The, again, the issues of the sewer, street, and park master plan, just being able to deal with our infrastructure and facilities, that will become part of the budget discussions. And then the Nexus Study, Nexus Fee Study update, we are working on the consultant to finalize the draft. That draft is due to the city this week. We are hopeful that this draft is going to be of a quality that is something that we can turn around quickly and bring to the council. We have had struggles with this project and getting it to be what we need it to be. And so looking forward to getting this one wrapped up in the next couple of months. Also too, we need to look at the HVAC and pool boiler replacement. That is going to be something that we're going to look at as part of mid-year and see if there's any, any projects that we need to ask the council for direction on, including as one-time expenses for preventative maintenance and to be proactive. The third goal to enhance professionalism and customer service, these top two have sort of been combined, and that is providing some additional training opportunities for the staff. We work as part of a consortium, and these, those, those programs are offered to our staff, and they're offered at, at cities in the vicinity. In addition to that though, we have been offering online courses. So people would meet at city, usually in this room, and we would do a webinar. And anything from four to five staff members, sometimes more, can participate in an online training program. And those who participate get into a drawing to get a gift card. And so that's really been a very effective way to, to do some targeted training, and only those individuals that really need it can come in and use it. And some of them have been really good, and we're going to repeat them in the next couple of months. And all of the department heads, including myself, are planning to attend their professional conferences. And so for example, I will be attending the city manager's League of California Cities meeting, which is a conference and organ, professional development opportunity for city managers in the first week in February. The other department heads are also participating in, in professional development as, as directed by the council. And I have to say, I really appreciate that this council makes that a priority. It is very difficult for us to get away, and it's so easy to not do it because you think you can't get away from the office. And yet, once you do, it is amazing the information that you pick up. And I had an opportunity to attend the League of California Cities Conference in September as well, and you know, it's, it's amazing what I, I picked up at that. So I appreciate that the council encourages us to do that. And as I mentioned earlier, we do participate in a consortium, we do have that list of trainings, and staff has been participating in the 2013 trainings, and will, will continue on until the new list takes place this spring for the 2014, 2015 fiscal year. Very effective way to get training, and some really positive things come out of that as well. And then we have plans to do the second employee survey to give the employees a chance to confidentially express any concerns that are going on. We did this in September of 2012, and so we are bringing back to see if we've made any progress in some of the areas that were identified last year. So at this time, very excited to see how that, how those results compare to last year. But I think it's very important that we give the, the staff a chance to communicate confidentially, and it allows us to identify if there are any issues that are sort of hidden down in the organization. So for me, as your city manager, again, I appreciate your goal to increase professionalism and our customer service, and one way to do that is to get down into the organization and make sure there's nothing festering. And this, this survey is a way to do that. Also happy to report that as part of our achieving and maintaining financial stability and sustainability, that we did get two labor bargaining agreements approved and implemented for 2013, 2014. Those go into, are in effect and will continue through January 1st, 2015. I, again, just appreciate the cooperation of the council and each of the employee groups and the willingness to find a, a solution to our fiscal constraints and the reasonableness of everybody involved. And I do believe that these labor agreements are financially responsible. We also have implemented new employee time tracking software, and this has been something that will help us be able to better track time, particularly for grant purposes. So we are being very effective in how we're using time and being able to make sure that we're not undercharging or overcharging our grants. Retaining and attracting businesses is clearly a very important goal, and one of the areas that has been a big theme for retaining and attracting businesses is making sure that our, our documents, our planning and community development documents are in order. And in the midst of the, the chaos created by the economic recession and all of the things surrounding that, a lot of our things got out of date. And so we are beginning to bring those back into, into conformance and to update them to reflect what the environment looks like today. It was a very different world back in 2006, 2005, those early years, and there was a lot of going on, and that, that clearly has changed. So we're updating those. So at this time, we're working on a, a mixed-use chapter of the zoning code. That has been discussed by the Planning Commission a couple of times, it's bringing back, and we need to bring that back to the city council as well. We also are planning at the next city council meeting to bring to the city council the specific plan for the former Army ammunition plant, known as the LRA and the Riverbank Industrial Complex, and that will be coming before you at the next meeting. The Downhand Specific Plan is another project that has been sort of in an interesting state of limbo. We wanted to, we did put it in suspense so we could make sure that all of the, the notices were done correctly, that the Planning Commission appointments had been documented properly, and so we will be bringing that back as well. It's not moving as quickly as life, but this again, is one of those projects that, that we're going to be taking care of in the next six months and get this moving forward. The next objective in terms of reaching out to business, the mayor has, has been very successful in the breakfast that he had with community businesses. Since we last talked and set the strategic plan, it, we really moved to the nonprofit and faith-based community to expand out our reach. We've made efforts to also have individual meetings with businesses, and there hasn't been a lot of response to that. I think people are so busy, unless there's a problem, they really don't want to take the time to meet with us. But there has been a great response to the breakfast, and the nonprofit faith-based discussions have also been very, very interesting. And that, that segment of, of the community, I think, is important to overall quality of, of life here. And all of you, I mean, the, the nonprofit faith-based meeting, that was attended by every single member of the city council, so I think that's a real tribute to, to all of you for that and your interest there, and was very well attended by this, both the nonprofit and faith-based groups. And then in those discussions came a possibility of having a gang awareness summit sometime this spring. This is one of those items that is not on the strategic plan and really is a, something that we'll need to look at in terms of devoting appropriate resources to it. I know that the, the mayor is, really wants to deal with this issue, it's very complex. And as we move forward, that's something that will probably need to be looked at in the next strategic planning session that'll be in March. We are evaluating the qualifications of a master developer for the local redevelopment authority, and we actually have gone through that process, and we actually have a closed session on that this evening. We also are working on the modification of the general plan, annexation policies to better reflect today's development environment. We did have a special joint planning commission meeting with the city council on November 4th, which provided very good direction to the staff. And then this item is going to the Planning Commission on the 21st, and will be coming back to the council, most likely the first meeting in March. So in light of talking about the strategic plan, in addition to the day, day, day activities and the strategic objectives that have been discussed by the council and agreed on, since our strategic planning session in September, there are a number of regional issues that have really developed some steam and are going to require some attention for consideration. And one is the regional water matters. As we've been seeing in the headlines, water is becoming of, of great concern. One is because of the drought, two is because of the expansion of, of planting and the uncontrolled drilling of wells in some of the agricultural areas that surround us. While it has not directly impacted Riverbank to date, we are concerned about that long term. And, and because there's now some effort to put together a water committee at the county level, some concerns about how the cities can have a voice in that process, that this is going to take, be taking a little bit more, more time. In addition to that, the planning for the North County Corridor is taking place, and that, that project is, is picking up speed, and it is requiring us to watch very carefully. The mayor sits on that board, he knows these issues very well, and it is, it has hit a point where we really need to be watching that and providing some additional staff evaluations, staff support to the mayor as he is representing the city on this, and bringing the council into these discussions because the plans they make today could have a very positive or a very negative impact on our community. And the mayor is actually in the process of, of writing a letter to start outlining some of our concerns. And so this is an issue that is going to be something that the council as a whole is, is going to need to be looking at, and again, something that we need to be including for our, our long-term development. The discussions regarding a countywide sales tax measure are continuing. As I, I've mentioned to a couple of you, last week was a really big week, there were a lot of, many hours of meetings and discussions about whether or not it was possible that, that the region should go for another sales tax. The reason why they are, StanCOG, being our council of government and our transportation planning agency, wants to move forward is, is that if we do have a sales tax specifically for transportation in Stanislaus County, it makes us eligible for additional funds and allows us to leverage that. They call it self-help communities. And so in order to be a self-help county, we need to have that sales tax. In addition, there's a discussion that if a sales tax measure is to be, be done, and if it's to be presented to the, the voters, that local streets and roads need to be a very important part of the equation, because there's a lot of money out there for transit operations. There's a fair amount of money out there for regional roads and collectors and major thoroughfares. There's, the only funds we have available for local street repairs is gas tax and general fund. And so we are seeing the impact of delayed maintenance and reduced funding in our streets. And so it's really important that, that countywide that that's considered. And Riverbank might be in a better position than most, but it is clearly an issue, a long-term concern about how do we maintain our local streets and roads, as well as the regional arterials and the, and collector regional arterials and collector roads. And then also to really positive development as well is the Lower Stanislaus River Working Group. And this is something that I think all of the council has expressed an interest in, and there's been a tour, and that's not something that's going to require, it's probably going to move slowly, and it'll be something that we'll be doing over years, not necessarily weeks or months, but it is something that's on the radar screen, and long-term, developing the river area, making it more accessible to our community, goes to a much higher quality of life. It goes to the healthy eating and active lifestyle that we were talking about earlier. And the better quality of life we have here, the better we're going to be able to attract and attain, excuse me, attract and retain businesses. In addition to that, there's been a number of changes in the community by the loss of some of the nonprofit leaders in the group in the city and special events. And so the Cheese and Wine Festival is something that the Rotary has asked the city to consider taking a much larger role in. Community gardens and the Friends of Jacob Myers Park have said that they can't continue to do Beyond Earth Day. There's a desire to see farmers' markets come back in conjunction with the Wednesday night events that we started last year. And there's just is a limit to how much we can, we can take on with existing resources. And so we're going to be discussing special events, and I need to get some feedback from the council on where you want our efforts to be in terms of special events with our resources. Where do you want us to invest in those? And Sue and Carrie and her team, they do amazing things with a very small amount of money and a very small staff. They have to recognize what some of the limits are there. And then district elections, and that's something that we are currently in the process of doing, an RFP, to get a firm on board to do the data analysis associated with that. We don't know what that's going to mean for us, but it is something that could require a fair amount of time and energy as we move forward in the coming year. So I just wanted the council to be aware of publicly. I know that you are all, these are all on your radar screens as well because you have, you all are very engaged council, but to publicly present this so that the community also knows some of the things that we are doing that are not necessarily reflective in our strategic plan, but are taking, you know, that we are paying attention to as a staff and as a city. And so anybody who's interested, Monday, March 3rd is the next strategic planning session. We're planning to have that at the Riverbank Industrial Complex. There's a conference room there. And at the last, interestingly enough, at the last two strategic planning sessions, we had a couple of members of the public who are now sitting on the city council. Councilmember Campbell attended one as a member of the public and then was elected, and Councilmember Jones Cruz attended last, the last strategic planning session to, as an interested member of the public, and then, of course, was, since that time, has been appointed to the city council. So it is a very informative day, and I look forward to having another very productive session with the staff and council, and certainly appreciate your commitment to doing that so we can use our resources effectively as possible. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to address any questions.
Sure, each one of us has questions. Are there any questions? Councilmember Cruz, Jones Cruz?
I don't have anything at this time. Thanks.
I look forward to, excuse me, getting together on Monday, March 3rd to move things forward. I know that it seems like there is a lot on, seems like there's a lot on our plates, but everything is, you know, falling in place. Everything is being addressed as much as possible, as much as we know when we know it, and so we'll just do what we can, just move forward with what we can do.
I agree with Councilmember Barbara Martinez. I think we're slowly making progress. We've got a lot to do, but I look forward to working together on March 3rd and tackling these projects and setting things up so that we can make more progress, and I think that we are ready for the job.
I just have a couple of comments on, the ADA Transition Plan is one that the sooner we get it, the safer the city will be in any litigation. There are people out there that are looking at it, and we all are aware of that. I'm glad we're using the webinars. I've heard several of the staff members praise the results of them, plus some of the other training that they have. I know at the LRA, some of the staff members there were very pleased with some of the training that they had. For our employees, we're talking about the, what the employees did with their labor negotiation. We truly have an amazing staff, and they haven't had an increase in pay for a period, what, four years?
Five, I think.
Five years. And they've come up with some burden on themselves, paying for their own retirement. And I know that it's probably a little contentious right now with the health care, with the transition in the health care. So we need to be aware almost immediately if there's going to be a negative impact on the staff, because we can't lose what we cherish right now. And for the roads increase, I think I'll get rid of my hybrids and start getting a gas guzzler so we can get more tax.
The sacrifices the council makes to never get conflict.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public wish to comment on the strategic plan?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the council, Mr. Mayor, and staff. I didn't hear much about the improve and maintain infrastructure in the facilities. What in the 2014 year started being done about the Rossell Avenue project to put proper sidewalks to keep the children that come out of the bus stops from the school bus to come out on the street. Hope to God, I'm praying to God every day and night for rain. I ask you to do the same. God can send us rain if we all are united in prayer. It's very much needed. And then when it comes, there is nothing done yet about the Rossell Avenue danger that the children and parents and care providers are put on. Right now it's nice and dry. I have not clocked, but I have calculated that cars go there 45, 50 miles per hour from Patterson Avenue all the way up to Clarabelle. And you can see the lack of police patrols there. I saw in the last year, maybe a few days, that there was a police patrol around the time that a school bus was going by there because there were two or three creeps that don't care about safety, and they went through a bus with red lights flashing. And then once the police, of course, is there, of course, they're not going to dare. They are really, quote-unquote, smart about it. But let's hope to God that nothing happens. When the rain comes, that those children are going to be provided with a sidewalk by then. And by then, they're going to say, well, it's raining, we cannot get it started. Right now it's dry. Take advantage of it. Right now it's to work on it. It's sunny. You know that the pavement takes some time in order to be worked on. Cannot be worked if it's too hot. Cannot be worked if it's too cold. Well, right now it's just the right weather to get it started, and breaking down that work would be very much appreciated. Thank you very much.
Any further public comment? Can I bring it back to the council? There's no action except for to move on. Item 6.4, annual nomination and appointment of the vice mayor. That is for my action, I believe. This council actually has started since Councilmember Leanne Jones Cruz has come on board in October. So it's been a very short council that we've had. And I do feel strongly on retaining Vice Mayor Tucker as the vice mayor. But I feel just as strongly to give everyone else a chance to shine. So with the council's indulgence, I would like to appoint Councilmember Cal Campbell as the vice mayor.
And you're looking, that's a motion?
Yes.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.5, members of the city council appointments to external boards and committees and city council LRA appointments to internal committees for the year of 2014. Okay, I believe everyone has in front of them the city council intergovernmental, governmental boards and committees. What I would like, as we go down each one, if you are a member, if you wish to retain, please state so. And if you cannot fill that billet or that, those duties, please state, and we'll have someone else. I know I said billet, and you laughed at it. Okay, the first one is the League of California Cities Central Valley Division Executive Committee. I'm on the primary and Janine Tucker's alternate. I'd like to retain the primary.
Would that, I'm happy to keep the alternate, but should that go to Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes, right now, that's the discussion. Would you like that to go to the vice mayor?
Certainly, if he's able to do that.
League of California Cities Annual Conference Delegate. That's usually designated in June. Usually those who are members of the California League or who participates in the committees are the ones that are designated. Last year it was Councilmember Barbara Martinez and myself, and I don't see any necessity to change that right now. But we'll discuss that in June. North County Corridor Transportation Expressway Authority Board. This board meets the third Wednesday of every month at 4:30 PM. I'm the primary. Councilmember Barbara Martinez is the alternate. I'd like to remain as the primary.
Yes.
Okay. And you and I are going to need to talk about the North County Corridor is going to come to a head here soon. StanCOG Policy Board. I'm the primary, and secondary is usually the vice mayor. Vice Mayor, do you have any problems with that?
Not at all.
Meets on the third Wednesday in the StanCOG. I would encourage, if you are going to attend a couple of the meetings, to see how exciting and fruitful they are.
Can't wait.
We have the Stanislaus Office of Emergency Services Disaster Council. These are individuals that serve a two-year appointment. Councilmember Janine Tucker and Councilmember Barbara Martinez are both serving their second year coming up, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So you'll be on for one more term unless you cannot make it, but I'm sure you can. Stanislaus Economic Development and Workforce Alliance Board. The alliance meets on the third Monday of every odd month. I'm the primary on there, and Councilmember Campbell, you're the alternate. I'd like to give up my seat as the primary. There's a work condition where I am not available in the mornings, most mornings, and I'm not going to be able to make this upcoming, coming Monday meeting. So if we could, if it's acceptable, have Vice Mayor Campbell as the primary.
Acceptable.
And I'd like to be the alternate. My conditions will change in about three, four months. Now, this one is a food fight for everyone. The Lower Stanislaus River Trail Improvement Plan Committee. Who would like to be the primary?
I'd like to remain.
Okay, and Councilmember Barbara Martinez, you want to remain the alternate?
Yes.
Budget Advisory Committee. Currently, I'm the primary. I would like to withdraw from that committee this year because Maricela Garcia looked at my schedule and scheduled her meetings when I was busy.
Speaking in Maricela's defense, I believe that that was a committee decision and not a staff decision.
So they looked at my schedule and said, okay, all right, thank you. I'd like to open it up to anyone who would like to be on the committee.
I'll do it.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
I'll probably meet at a time. I can meet with them, though.
As the primary, who would like to be alternate?
What is the, what is the schedule?
Yeah.
They'll look at your schedule and change it.
Typically, the committee meets in the evenings, starting at 6 o'clock, and they end at 7:30 pretty promptly.
Okay.
It depends. It was mostly Wednesdays last year. It was Tuesdays the year before. It really depends upon the committee, and they decide on that. And the first meeting is scheduled for February 5th, which I believe is a Wednesday.
What is that, what day of the week is that?
I think it's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
Wednesday, February 5th.
Wednesdays are usually StanCOG meetings when they do meet.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, so I probably better refrain from that one.
I'll continue to serve as alternate.
Okay.
That's okay.
Thank you. Friends of Jacob Myers Park, currently as councilmember, now Vice Mayor Campbell, and alternate is Councilmember Barbara Martinez. Any issues on that one?
When do they meet?
They have been meeting the last Thursday of the month, but they're not meeting until March. So at this particular time, their meetings haven't been quite as consistent this year, but I'm comfortable remaining if you suggest it is.
Yeah, and I'd encourage everybody who can, if you're an alternate, attend the primary meetings. Environmental Review Committee, it meets with the mayors, and it's, there's only one option on that one. Local Redevelopment Authority Committee Advisory, Community Advisory Committee. Authority member Barbara Martinez is the primary, and we have an alternate. Anyone would wish to?
I'll serve as alternate.
Okay.
I'll take a look at the time that that committee meets.
Yeah, that may have to change based on our requirements coming on up, but that's not, that's not firm yet.
The local redevelopment, yeah, I think it'll depend.
The date, or days changing for meetings?
The days changing for meetings. At this time, the labor groups have voted to move to another schedule as part of the, as a follow-up to the labor, the formal labor agreements. I anticipate in bringing that to council at the end of January. I know the council has expressed a willingness to look at a new date, possibly Tuesday, and having our council meetings on the second and fourth Tuesdays. So other committees will work around the city council.
They would have to.
Yes, you guys, I just declare, I know, the clarified public, you guys are the, you guys are the top dogs, so.
As we should be.
Yes. You are the, you are the group that has to go get elected.
The Economic Development Committee and the Downtown Revitalization Committee, are we, did we combine those?
Yes, those groups have been inactive, and we are anticipating some sort of revision of that with the downtown specific plan project, developing some momentum in 2014. One of the issues that we've talked about is, is these committees are formed, they usually accomplish their purpose, and there's really no need to keep them ongoing if there isn't a specific project for them to tackle. And so in respect for everybody's time and effectiveness, it just makes sense. But we do anticipate some version of this coming, coming back.
And that won't be as the current mission statement bylaws or whatever for the, for the committee?
I think we need to look at that and see what makes the most sense. I think we need to look at that and see what makes the most sense.
And my recommendation to the councils is that as they come up with, if they come up with some type of committee, then we sit down and discuss who and how we'll address it. Because assigning someone to Economic Development Committee, and they change the name or title to it, then we defunct it and then go back up. But we can keep it as it is, but I prefer that we just let it lie until such time that the committee becomes active. Sister City Committee. That's another inactive one. They were trying to get that activated, correct? And that?
They were, yeah, they were, they were trying, but I haven't heard from anyone. I think I saw someone, excuse me, in maybe sometime first part of November, but they haven't done anything.
That can be, that can become active.
It can.
Okay.
And they have said that they want to get back, get the committee back together, so.
Okay.
That was the last I heard.
So we have now councilmember Tucker on there. Who would like to be the alternate? You're, you're.
Yeah, I had, I had wanted to be involved, yes.
You have been involved, haven't you?
Yes, I have.
I was involved when they did the.
Heritage.
Well, the September 16th day, the last one they did.
And this is one of those committees that while the council has a liaison to, like Jacob Myers Park, is that we take the lead from the nonprofit group that's, that's leading the charge.
They're, they're in charge, we're there as a liaison.
Yes.
Okay, the community has heard our recommendations. We'll vote on it here in a moment. Is there any comments from the public? Saying none? I recommend that we approve item 6.5, the members of the city council appointments to external boards and committees, and city council LRA appointments to the internal committees for the year of 2014.
I second that.
We have a motion to approve and a second.
Council Authority Member Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Council Authority Member Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Council Authority Member Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Item 7.1, staff comments.
At this time, I just wanted to reiterate that the first meeting of the Budget Advisory Committee will be on Wednesday, February 5th. We are still accepting applications for those, those seats.
Do we have any applications?
Yes, anticipate bringing that to you in January, January 27th. Looking to set up an interview with the applicant.
Thank you. No further staff comments?
No further staff comments this evening.
Trying to get out of here fast. Item 7.2, council authority member comments. Councilmember Jones Cruz?
I just have brief comment. I got an opportunity to stop by one of our new businesses that just opened last week, the Neil Carl's Jr. on the corner Patterson, and I was thrilled to see that going smoothly. Introduced myself to the manager, and also just make a note that it was the talk of my eighth period class that they had hired several of high school students. So I was like, wow, you guys got jobs in River, awesome! So I was very excited, and my students were shocked to see me come in there and buy a soda at eight o'clock at night and say hi to them and welcome them to town. So it was kind of fun. Thank you.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
I do have a few comments, not many tonight, but just a couple. The senior meals on Will's program in our community has meals three times a week, and I'm very pleased to announce that the first senior brunch Fridays will be starting this Friday, January 17th, from 10 to 12 at our community center. And lunch will be provided by the culinary department at the Riverbank High School, and they're asking for a dollar donation, and it's appreciated to help offset the cost of food from the culinary department. Everyone is really excited about this. I get a chance tomorrow to go and meet the students that will be preparing the food at the high school, and the seniors are ecstatic that they get to come together and meet and have fun for another day.
No, sir, please sit down.
And then we have Martin Luther King Junior Day, which is Monday, the 20th, and this day is recognized as a day of service. So I urge everyone to look for opportunities to help your neighbor or join a nonprofit organization in our community to provide service to others. We also have our Man of the Year, Citizen of the Year Dinner, or often known as Moikoi. It is Saturday, January 25th, at the community center. And this committee recognizes our citizens for their outstanding community service. And we also recognize our youth and the businesses of the year for giving back to the community. Tickets are available at City Hall, and I invite everyone to come out and have fun with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tucker?
Just want to wish everybody Happy New Year, and I join with councilmember Barbara Martinez in encouraging everyone to, in recognition of Martin Luther King's birthday as National Day of Service, to, to, to get out and volunteer in our community. There's so many opportunities to serve, and it certainly gives everyone a, you know, makes you feel good, makes you feel warm in your heart, so take advantage of that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Campbell?
I would just like to encourage everyone to read, stay on top of what's happening in our county. We have some big issues that are going to require a lot of public input. Water is one of them. There's gonna be some changes with, I just read recently, in how oil comes on the major railroads coming through this town, and I'm wondering how that may affect us in the future. So I would encourage everyone to tell the public, and your friends and whatnot, stay on top of things because we, as council, represent you, and we may be needing your assistance to help get our point across on some of these issues.
Thank you. On January 29th, we're gonna have another meeting with religious leaders and service community groups. It's gonna be at the teen center, I believe. It's gonna be six o'clock, 6:30. I encourage everyone to attend. It was very productive in the November meeting. We had a splinter group that talked about gangs and some of the threats. Well, that's gonna be portion of that meeting, but it's also gonna be, you know, how well we did during the Christmas season, how much that, you know, we could still share amongst each other the resources, and how each community leader and each civic group leader and religious leader can help each other out to attain the goals that they have. As mentioned by the city manager, the North County Corridor is an instrument that will affect us for 100 years. I'm not convinced that the current alignment is the best interest, and how it got passed people in 2012 is beyond me, or maybe it didn't even get exposed in 2012, as indicated. But we're gonna meet about that, and on, this Wednesday is the North County Corridor meeting. It'll be addressed publicly by myself. But we're gonna meet with the county engineer in advance to lay out our serious concerns. District election RFP closes on the 22nd?
22nd or 24th?
22nd, okay, and maybe we can have a brief update, whether publicly or privately, at the next meeting. I appreciate that, where we're going, because that is a major concern for this community, whether we go into district elections or we do not, and how we involve the entire community. As mentioned, water is a big issue, has been a big issue when I was a very, very young kid in the 60s and early 70s. But nothing's been done until it's becoming catastrophic. So we have to pay close attention to our wells and our ability to continue to provide water to the community of Riverbank. And with that, we go into closed session with item 8-1, Conference with Real Estate Property Negotiator, LRA, Government Code Section 59, correction, 54956.8, property 5300, Claus Road, Modesto, California 95357, agency negotiator Jill Anderson, city manager, property negotiator U.S. Army, and the negotiation price, term of payment of both. With that, are there any public comments on closed session item 1.8? With that, we go into closed session. Report from closed session item 9.1, Conference with Real Property Negotiator. On a vote of five-zero, we are provided directions to staff. With that, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you, council.